Police Department will release a body camera footage of the Walter Wallace Jr. We actually had a meeting at the police administration building where we had a chance to view that footage as well as some of the other calls that came in prior to the officers arriving at the scene. And so this attorney is meeting with the family. There is a criminal investigation as well as an internal affairs investigation, but we anticipate that being released today and we also may have an intergovernmental call sometime later today just to prepare for any additional actions that may occur in the city.
So is there a possibility you might have to jump off of this to go to something else? And if so, that's fine.
So when we met this morning, and then we had some other conversations, there was a discussion about trying to put a call together. I don't see a Microsoft Teams invitation for that. So we will just continue to proceed with the conversation.
Okay, so we'll get things started. We will circle back to what you were just mentioning there. So hello, GPAR. Welcome to our town hall with council member Derek Green. And I think, way we'll just get to start it, councilman, why don't we do a little bit of an introduction? Let's pretend that some of our members have zero idea what an at-large council person is. Your role there, your path to becoming a city council member. So a little bit of background about yourself, like a quick introduction.
And I apologize for the background light, maybe a little ambient. In addition to all the things that are happening in my world and dealing with COVID and some of the challenges in our city and election that happened yesterday, my first floor of my house is being renovated with the kitchen and two other rooms and a bathroom, so. My family is in the second and third floor of my house doing virtual school and there are my wife in her work, so I'm outside enjoying the fall elements. Yeah, great fall foliage, but the little background and thank you, Matt, for the introduction. Thank you, Summer, as well. It's also great to be here with the Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors. As an at-large member of city council, I'm now into my second term. And I worked in city council for some years before I came into city council. Prior to working in city council, I was a deputy city solicitor. Where I represented the cities then Office of Housing Community Development, a number of the alphabet soup agencies that we talked about, for example, the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Also worked with Philadelphia Housing Development Corporation, Philadelphia Commercial Development Corporation, Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, hence the alphabet soup of agencies and all the acronyms, as well as with federal agencies like housing urban development, as well as a number of state agencies like the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency or PHFA. Prior to working in the law department, I spent time as assistant district attorney here in the city of Philadelphia and prior to being an ADA in Philadelphia, I was an assistant deputy attorney general in the state of Delaware during both criminal work as well as securities work, which is how I kind of got.
No, we're a little frozen here.
Into my interest in law, I started my, okay. I started my career as a small business lender with Meridian Bank. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're good.
Some of you may remember the original Meridian Bank professionals with personal touch. And I started with Meridian when I came out of the University of Virginia. Worked as a small business lender with Meridian for a couple of years and then I went back to law school. In law school, I had the interest of doing something finance related and I kind of got steered to securities. Law, I spent one summer at the SEC here in Philadelphia and then spent a summer at the Delaware Department of Justice in a securities division. They made me an offer when I came out of law school, had a chance to work in both the securities division and then had a chance to also do some criminal work, which then led me to the opportunity to come back to Philly in the VA's office, which circles back to the information I provided before.
There we go. There we go, guys. Really quick background there. Pretty great diverse path and it goes to show that, just like lots of our members, they, they have various different experiences that lead them to where they're at and all that accumulation of those experiences help them for the job and the role that they're in now and who knows what's out there in the future. So we talked about the pandemic a little bit, or at least Mitch dropped the word of got schooling going on in one floor, work going on another floor, you're out on the porch. How has the pandemic been with your family? How are you guys making out? We last talked back in the springtime, a lot of times elapsed since then.
Well, we've been, you know, doing pretty well. I'm not sure, but some of your members may know that I have 90-year-old son on autism spectrum. He is doing really well, adjusting well to the virtual environment that we're in. You know, goes to school online and then he's involved in a couple of different programs after school. Goes to speech therapy virtually with LaSalle University and then he's also in a program at the Skinny Center for Autism at St. Joseph's twice a week and then he goes to some music school on Saturdays. Sometimes I think his schedule is as busy, if not busier than mine. But he's doing well. My wife is a project manager at Children's Hospital Philadelphia. She's actually helping to build a new hospital at King of Prussia. Has a background in information technology and healthcare, has worked at Price Waterhouse, Ernst &amp; Young. My family joke that we've gone on so many different platforms. I'm sure some of you have done the same. Prior to about a month ago, I was holding steady at about 15 different platforms. But in the past few weeks, I've added two more platforms. So I'm really learning all the different ways you can communicate virtually. Not only Skype and Zoom and WebEx and GoToMeeting, but other platforms like Wahova that I was just on when I became the president, the Pennsylvania Municipal League. Remo is another platform I've been using as a board member for National Cities. And Mural, I did a symposium for International Society of Autism Advocates and they use this platform called Mural, which allows you to do a whiteboard as your breakout session. So I'm trying to figure out all these platforms as we navigate COVID. Overall, my family's been healthy. We know we've been doing the precautions that we need to do as a family and because I am in city council, I get privy to a lot of information. And so, you know, daily I get updates on our number of new cases and positivity rates. I do have a concern that now if we go into the fall, the later part of the fall and we get into the weather months, our infections have been going up. Right around, I would say if we were going to June and then July, you know, we're looking at numbers of roughly 200 semi-cases a day. And then it kind of dipped back up at 4th July and then came down pretty significantly. Around Labor Day, we were looking at 86, 87, 90, 90 cases a day. Over the past few weeks, though, it has been trending upwards. For example, today I saw we had 614 new cases. Yesterday was like 630, three-day average. Over the weekend definitely had an average close to about 600 cases. That's been the past week and a half, which is pretty striking considering we haven't seen those type of numbers since, you know, late March, early April. So that definitely is a concern when we've done such a great job and having at one point less than 100 cases a day to now seeing a couple of days in a row at that high number.
So a lot of stuff you just threw out there that I want to unpack, but since we're right on the COVID subject, what do you see going forward? So obviously, numbers are going up. Different things were done back in the spring. Clearly, a lot of learning lessons happened from the spring experience to where we are now. So if you go ahead and look at Pennsylvania, yes, we can see our hospitalization rates in the Commonwealth are where they were. I looked earlier today. We're right where we were around Memorial Day. However, you can go ahead and look and corresponding to the last time we were around 1,400 hospitalizations, we had far more people on ventilators. So clearly, there's been some adjustment adjustments in how COVID patients are being treated and whatnot. So you were, you know, and different therapies are coming into play and whatnot because we're starting to understand it better. But as you were saying, things are not going in the right direction. Any, are you seeing any indications about what the city might be doing going forward? Are we going to go back to where we were in the spring? Is it going to be a hybrid? Any kind of a?
I think it's still early. I have not seen any adjustments. Now, if you look at where Philadelphia has been compared to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as Pennsylvania opened things back up, the city generally was three to four weeks behind. For example, around Labor Day, the Commonwealth allowed, you know, some of the indoor dining and restaurants, whereas Philadelphia didn't. That didn't occur to, if I remember correctly, about September 28th, September 30th. So we've been lagging a little behind the Commonwealth. I have not seen at the state level changes on how we're doing things. I think we need to have a, be more vigilant and letting people know that we need you to continue to physically distance, wear your mask, wash your hands. I do think there's been a perspective of fatigue that has impacted people over the past number of weeks. We've also had, you know, people going back to some colleges, we're doing in-person versus virtual. We've had additional outdoor dining opportunities. That's what I'm saying, indoor dining opportunities, even though I had a reduced head count. So some of those issues I think are concerning also because it is in the fall. Now, we have, you know, flu and other type of issues and concerns. But I feel concerning caution because of the increase. But I have a different perspective because I think, as you were saying, Matt, we are better prepared for this situation. I have not heard issues like lack of personal protective equipment like we were hearing in the early part of the pandemic. We have now deaths will trail hospitalizations and infections, so I unfortunately think that number will go up. I don't think it will go up at the same level as it was doing in the early part of the pandemic because we have a better understanding of the nature of disease. As you said earlier, I think we're starting to see some better therapeutics and other measures. And we're going to have some very challenging number of weeks as we go from the fall into the winter. But I think we are better positioned because of our now history with this pandemic and have a little better perspective from a preparation. As we're hearing, you know, Dr. Fauci and other experts saying, no, as early as mid-spring, they had a concern of a second wave and how that would impact us in the fall. And I think that's now coming to fruition. You've seen what's happening in other nations, especially in Europe and then doing additional measures. I have not heard those type of steps being discussed, at least publicly. They may be having internal conversations. We have not had that as a city council, with administration and the health department, those type of questions. But I, I'm, it's, it's one of those cautiously optimistic that we can get through, but concerned because there is an increase in infections. And as you see what's happening in other parts of the country that were not hit as hard as the East Coast was, they're dealing with some of the same issues that eastern part of the country was dealing with in the beginning of pandemic. We love that the Dakotas and some of the parts of the Midwest, they're having some real concerns about hospitalization, access to ventilators and some of the things that we talked about.
Yes, plus, you know, we look off from the horizon and we have things like Thanksgiving and other holidays coming up and it's usually about gathering and food and celebration and clearly there's going to be a desire probably more than ever this year to connect and navigating through that.
And if I could jump in, one of the other reasons I've heard for the concern with increasing infections, there's been more and more small gatherings where people are coming together, seven, eight, nine or less coming together in their own homes. And people attending those events and then going to other small gatherings and then to other small gatherings. So that's been a concern. And that dovetails directly to your point about Thanksgiving because it is a time of celebration and coming together, family, and we've been dealing with this since March. And so when you think of the major holidays that we as a nation celebrate, we've lost some of those, Memorial Day, 4th of July, Labor Day, Halloween, we just had Halloween and, you know, that's, and I live in Mount Airy, Halloween, Halloween is almost like a, a community holiday.
All right, we're having a little technical difficulties here. Councilman, can you hear us? You're a little frozen right now.
Pandemic as infections have started to go up.
All right, so since we're, we're progressing along with the COVID conversation, we know that businesses are hurting, individuals are hurting, the city is hurting. There was some relief that came from Washington DC earlier in the year. There was a lot of wrangling about that over the course of the summer, spilled into the fall. And the powers that be 90 miles from here, we're not able to go ahead and get on the same page. How much does Philadelphia need some help from the federal government? And if so, what kind of help does it need? And, and if, you know, you had a say in it, where would you start to direct that to?
I'll, I'll give some perspective. As we were going through our budget process this year for the FY21 budget, we initially saw a deficit of about $649 million. And so that was a number we were dealing with to kind of get our arms around this and try to solve. As we got into June, especially the latter part of June, as, you know, we've got to do a new budget by the beginning of the new fiscal year, which is July 1. As we received the May numbers for the city, we found out that we were not a $649 million deficit, but a $749 million deficit because of revenues we anticipated for May did not meet those numbers. So we had to be creative. We did a debt restructuring that freed up about $85 million that allowed us to solve our budget challenge here in the city of Philadelphia. But when you have that significant loss of revenue, that's a major issue. And when you look at the fact that we've gone through a lot of the available resources, we had a pretty strong fund balance and, you know, general fund balances, similar to like when you budget your, your checking account and you have all your revenues, expenses that are going to come in and that cushion that's left over. Well, based on the past number of years, we've had strong revenues coming into the city. So we had a very healthy fund balance and now based on various credit rating agencies and others, you need to have a balance that kind of equal the certain percentage of expenditures. So we had to reduce that amount to a much smaller number and do other steps to restructure things in order to get us through this budget process. So that was a concern and the concern is we go into this new fiscal year, we're still going to be dealing with the pandemic, probably for a number of months. Possibly into the end of 2021 before we really have a vaccination and mass distribution that can impact people. So we were really counting on some additional federal cares relief. That would help states and cities deal with revenue reimbursement. For example, the non-resident wage tax, that was a significant loss of revenue because if you're someone that is an attorney or engineer that works traditionally in center city, you've been working from home for a number of months. So those are people that are no longer working in the city, working outside of the city and we're not able to collect that non-resident wage tax. So that had a major impact. I serve on the board of the National Cities and we were, you know, advocating very strongly and lobbying for a number of senators, specifically focusing on Republican senators to try to get a package done. We thought we had some movement in August, right before the United States Senate took the recess. And then right before the election, we thought we were getting closer through, you know, negotiation between Speaker Pelosi and Treasury Secretary Mnuchin, but that did not come to fruition. So we'll see the impact of yesterday's election. Whether there will be an opportunity for another care package by the end of the year or in the first quarter of next year, looking at where numbers are from a election standpoint, a presidential level, is more likely that if we do get another cares package, it will be the first quarter of next year.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's, we'll take a little timeout from the serious stuff. Yesterday was Election Day. Okay, so how can we take a timeout from the serious stuff and talk about election? I think just from a curiosity standpoint, probably the, the folks that we have tuning in here have an interest in, in politics. And usually elected officials like yourself go around and do your hobnobbing on Election Day and usually it's going to Relish or going to Fourth Street Deli. What's that like? What's, what's that experience like when you're not on the ballot and you're just kind of making the rounds? What, what's that like for, for an elected official?
Well, you know, yesterday was odd because due to, once again, COVID has permeated every aspect of our lives. So normally on a traditional Election Day, you would see some people go to famous Fourth Street Deli off, off South Street. Generally, people get there around 10:30, 11-ish. And you get a sense of what people are hearing about on Election Day. And it's a good way to touch base and hear from various various board leaders, other elected officials. Those who are running for office will stop by because a lot of media will be there to take photos and want to get a sense. So it's a good way of getting information about what's going on. For me, as a committee person in the 22nd Ward, 16th Division in Mount Airy, now my day starts very early. I'm generally at the polling place anywhere between 6:30 AM to make sure the judge of election and the, the various clerks and entire election board is set up and ready so that we can open doors at 7 o'clock. And then I go from my division after kind of seeing the morning run and how things are going and then I try to visit other polling places around the Northwest. And then I expand that sometimes I'll hit East Falls, sometimes I'll hit Roxborough and then I may make it to Fourth Street, depending on what my day is like. And then from there, I may come back up to the Northwest to stop in at Relish, which is a restaurant on Ogden's Avenue. And you have a number of elected officials will come there, one for lunch, but also network here with a hearing, what's going on, what's been the early returns. And depending on the election, I then may leave Relish in the Northwest and go back to my polling place. And then I may go to West Philadelphia or Southwest to see what's going on. Because you may be able to talk with someone at a Fourth Street or Relish to hear about some anecdotal stories. But as an at-large member, I really want to see for my own eyes what's happening in the city. Is there long lines at this rec center, Penantie Recreation Center or that rec center? And definitely a certain part of the city where you have four or five polling places at that one location. So I try to do that to touch and feel and that kind of goes with my normal perspective because I try to get out of City Hall as much as possible to see what's happening in our city.
All right, there we go. A little insider perspective about Election Day and running around. And it's always good not to be on the ballot, right?
And that's just up until the morning. I didn't get into all the stuff after, you know, when we closed the poll and dropping off the box and looking at flash returns and so Election Day night can be a, a long, long day. He's well over 18, 18 to 20 hours. That's, that can be the length of the day. But you're energized, especially by the end of what's happening, what's going on.
That's how the sausage is made. So, all right, so we'll get back to the serious stuff. We, we appreciate that kind of insider perspective because it, it's always cool and, and like I was saying, I think we have folks here on this, this session that would, would appreciate hearing that kind of stuff. So again, you know, the city did some, some things in respect to the pandemic to try to help out various situations and people and all that kind of stuff. One of the areas was in the rental assistance program. And originally it started off with an assistance level of $700. It went up to $1,500. What, what were your thoughts on, on that program? What are you hearing about the, the applications? Because the deadline, I think it closes down today, I believe. What do you think about the rent assist program?
Well, that initially was started as we were going through the budget process where as we were getting federal cares dollars, we also receive community, well, every year we, the city receives community development block grant dollars from HUD. And as part of one of the cares packages, they provided COVID community development block grant dollars. So those dollars are used for that PHO rent assist program that you talked about. I know when I first opened it, there was a significant flood of applications and simply did not have the resources to meet all of the requests. And then it was a decision to provide some additional dollars by money that came to the city through federal cares dollars. Now to let you know, those dollars that the city received from the CARES Act initially were very, very restrictive. We only could use those dollars for expenditures directly related to the impact of COVID. So for personal protective equipment or for city employees that were directly doing or addressing COVID-related expenses. Later, the Federal Treasury kind of loosened those regulations which allowed federal cares dollars that had not been spent to be used for additional things like to augment the PHO rent assist program. And all of the federal cares dollars have to be used by the end of this calendar year. So I've made requests to the administration to give us understanding of how the remaining federal care dollars will be spent. They've indicated that they have specific use of those dollars, but the information keeps changing representative, the dollars that have been expended and what they will be used for. But I have a concern because we've got to use those dollars by the end of the year and we want to have a more inclusive process in deciding how the money will be spent.
So along those lines of rental assistance and landlord-tenant relations, we know that there was a package of bills that was introduced related to landlord-tenant rights. Can you give us an update on that legislation? Or is it going to be a sunset provision and all that stuff like that and coming up towards the end of the year?
Right, so my understanding on, and you're talking with the existing bills that are in the Housing Committee?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'm not a member of that committee, but I have received some information regarding that legislation. Most of the legislation that we have seen have been directly tied to COVID. So we should provide certain protections due to COVID. There's been a dispute on whether that protection should be expanded to everyone, regardless if you have a financial challenge that may not directly be related to COVID, like you may have lost your job or had some other issue prior to the pandemic. And so because of that perspective on policy, you have some council members that think that our legislation should continue to be specifically targeted to those impacted by COVID versus other council members who have the concern that if anyone is removed from their home, that could increase the spread of COVID. And we don't want to see that. Because of those differences of opinions, that legislation has not moved out of committee. My understanding is that the Housing Committee is scheduled to have another hearing, I believe, on Friday. There seemed to be some attempt at making a compromise, but that compromise did not come together at the last minute during the last Housing Committee meeting, but I don't, I can't predict what may happen on Friday. But I would think they would try to come to a resolution and my information- And my information, um, what I've been privy to, although not being a member of the committee, that people really want to focus these type of relief measures specifically to COVID-related aspects.
Got it, got it.
So now that could change that. You never know what.
Fluid situation.
And then ultimately if it comes out of committee, it's still got to come to the entire committee of the whole, which is council as an, an entire body. So.
Yep.
But I'll add one last caveat. We only have four council sessions left before the end of the year. So we do not have a session this week because of election. We have session next week. Um, and then we also don't have session, uh, the week, uh, Thanksgiving, because that Thursday is, uh, Thanksgiving. And then we only have two sessions left in December. So there's not a lot of time. And I would think those who are proponents of this legislation would probably want to get to a measure of compromise before we get to the end of the session.
Yeah. Uh, and sometimes that deadline is a really, can be a really, uh, good motivator for people, bringing them to the table. And then all of a sudden, you know, things that they weren't willing to compromise on before, uh, it's on the table and they're willing to, to do some slicing and dicing. So, um, but like you said, it, you're running out of calendar. And what they're trying to do is get something done on the calendar. Because as you, uh, for our folks, just so you guys understand this, suppose a bill gets introduced now, right? And maybe it stalls and it's having some problems like the councilman was highlighting. You know, and, and maybe there was an ambitious goal to get it done before the end of the calendar year. It's not always the end of the world. It can carry over, but the, the, this legislation here has provisions in there that are specific to the calendar. So it is a big deal if they can't get, get that done. Um, so yeah, it'll be interesting to see how that plays itself out over, over the coming weeks. So speaking of legislation, um, Councilman Dom introduced the bill recently of which our association was on very involved with, with community legal services. We partnered up with them. And it's dealing with, um, predatory home buying practices. Um, we would like to know what your thoughts are on that legislation and, um, do you think we have a chance of getting that bill passed, which we hope, we hope the answer is yes. Uh, because we really think it can help out and address, um, some situations that we're seeing across the city. And I think Councilman Green is frozen. Hey, Councilman, can you hear us? Can you guys hear me? Shake your heads. Yes. Okay. So it's not me.
We can definitely hear you. This is technology. It's great when it works. Uh, and when it lags on you, you know. We may have lost him. He may be trying to get back in. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot happening. So.
Chris, Chris, Chris Woski just dropped in there. Yes, we hear you. Good to see you, Chris. Good to see some different faces. Hey, Maria Quatron, how are you? Good to see you in here, Mona. So hopefully we can get the councilman back on. We got Carlos checking in. He's in the mobile legislative unit there. Got Robert there. He's only got the perfect lighting. I don't know. Maybe he has one of those ring lights. I don't know.
Like a bar.
Oh, there we go. Tricks of the trade. All right. I think we have the councilman jumping back in. Um, there he is.
All right. Sorry about that. Um, the nature of technology. But you were asking about, uh, Councilmember Dom's legislation, um, which I, if I recall, I'm also a co-sponsor. Uh, I think it's a very good piece of legislation. Uh, it's an issue that I know a number of members of council, especially district council members have had concerns in reference to seeing these, these placards that are always at, uh, 12 feet or high level on telephone poles. I'm always wondering how to get them up there. Uh, and I never see when people put those on poles. But I think it's something that a number of, um, members of council have concerns about, especially at the district level. Um, seeing people who are advertising, uh, I can buy your home now and these type of things which are, are concerned. And I would, we are predatory because they're trying to, um, take advantage of property owners, especially in neighborhoods where property values are increasing. Um, they're trying to get people to, um, sell their home now and get them thing they've got to sell now. They don't. Um, there'll be real issues. Uh, and I do think they, um, prey on people who may not have all the information. Uh, and, and you think about, uh, the city and we have a number of seniors or my dad would say seasoned citizens, uh, who may only live on their own. Their, you know, wife or husband partner may no longer be with them. Their children may have left, may not live in the city, may live in a suburb or another city. And so they're thinking, you know, I can't maintain all this house, um, and this other thoughts. And having someone kind of say, hey, you should sell me, you should sell me your home. Here's the information, here's a flyer. And I even see information where they'll send, you know, mailers to people's homes saying, dear resident, we just sold XYZ house a block away from you for X amount of dollars. And, and the concern is that for someone who may have bought their home decades ago, paid it off, seeing that number that another house was sold for may seem like, oh my gosh, I can't believe it. But is that the right price for your home without having other information? Uh, third parties who are not as financially motivated to try to convince you to sell. So I think having this type of legislation is very important. Uh, it's a great type of public service, um, to let people know, um, all the information they should have before they make that decision. Because from the vast majority of people, your home is your number one asset in your life from a financial perspective.
Well, we appreciate you saying those, those good words. The hearing will be, the committee hearing will be next week. Um, GPAR plans to testify on behalf of that legislation. So, uh, hopefully we see that successfully move out of the committee. Um, I will say that a lot of work was done upfront before it was, um, actually introduced. Um, and I think that, uh, very proud of, of how the process went. It was very deliberative and collaborative. So that it was probably, our goal was to get it like 95% ready. So that when it was introduced, we're not having to do a whole lot of that wrangling. And it makes it easier on those committee members to go ahead and say, let's move this guy forward. Um, so speaking of legislation.
And, and Realbrook, I think that's also a great opportunity for GPAR because you have agents all around the region, uh, a great opportunity to show how agents who live in all of our communities and neighborhoods are working to try to help address issues, um, at the local level. And so I, I hope that this will be, um, you have the ability to let the public know on a, you know, very both macro citywide and region wide, but also at, you know, very local neighbor level that these are. That you're trying to do to one, decide to individuals that you shouldn't feel pressured, um, by anyone to, to sell your most valued asset. And you should get third parties and others who do not have a financial interest to provide you with the information you need to really evaluate if selling your home at this time is the right thing. Um, with professionals that can help you do that.
Okay. So Councilman, uh, we had a couple of questions ju- jump into the chat, which tie into this just from, um, and it's not specific to the legislation, but how are council hearings being conducted? And how does the public get access to those hearings if they would like to watch, uh, either the stated meeting or a committee hearing? How, how do you do that?
So our, our hearings, we're doing our hearings through another platform, uh, Microsoft Teams. And so for our process, you know, you can view our city council sessions and hearings, um, both through Comcast or Verizon. I think it's Comcast channel 64 or 63. Verizon fires, um, Verizon fires channels 40 and 41. So you can see those hearings, um, when they are scheduled. If you want to just view them through your, um, cable, um, provider. Uh, if someone wants to testify, they, we know clearly talk with the, uh, sponsor of that, um, bill. And she or he will also talk to the chair of that committee. So a person can be set up to testify. Um, the way we've been doing hearings, um, in city council, because we are all on Microsoft Teams. Um, those individuals who are going to testify, the chief clerk's office will call them, um, at a designated time for when they are going to testify during the hearing. And then they will, they'll make sure the connection is strong and then they will verbally provide, um, their testimony, um, in that portion of the public comment. Or if someone's going to actually testify as part of a panel for hearing, um, the, uh, sponsor of the legislation working along with the chief clerk's office, the city council. And the council member staff will work with the panel, um, and if you don't want to testify, so they can testify by way of Microsoft Teams. Uh, so you can either view, um, the hearings, um, as we've done in the past through, you know, Comcast and fires. Or you can also, um, view, um, the hearings, um, by as a panelist through Microsoft Teams or calling in if you're doing public comment. Also on the phlcouncil.com website, we're also live streaming the hearings as well.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, we encourage you guys to go ahead and check that out. It's good to see as council president always says, you get to see your government in action. So, uh, so, so tune in. We encourage you to tune in. Um, so speaking of legislation and things that have been introduced, um, council, council member Parker introduced, uh, some legislation on behalf of the council president. And that is proposing a 1% construction impact tax, uh, on new commercial and residential construction. And there was an accompanying piece of legislation, um, introduced by Councilman Heenan to extend the 10-year tax abatement, uh, by three years. Big heavy lifts, a lot, lot going on with all that. Um, the construction tax was around before 10, 10-year tax abatement program has been the football that's been thrown around a whole lot. Um, and, and council made a decision on that last fall. In fact, it was just after Thanksgiving of last year. What are you seeing? What are your thoughts on it? Uh, what, what's the path forward with, with this package of legislation?
Well, these bills are scheduled to be heard, yeah, in the committee hall and that's all the members of council. Um, I believe they're finalizing that date, um, or they may have just set it on the calendar very tentatively. Um, you know, we just, as you stated, Matt, we made changes to 10-year tax abatement. I did have some concerns on making those changes because I felt that what if we have some type of financial impact in the years to come? What would that mean in reference to the abatement? Uh, of course, none of us could have ever predicted a global pandemic that has also been an economic crisis. But when we did the legislation last fall, the focus was let's do the legislation now. We'll give a year before the legislation goes into effect. We'll do a 10% reduction per year, uh, of the abatement, but also after three years, we're going to use as an opportunity to study the impact of the abatement on the fiscal health of the city. Uh, now there are new members of council who are pushing to eliminate the abatement. I also think that the abatement has not received, um, the type of perspective in reference to how it's helped the city of Philadelphia from the hundreds of millions of dollars that we've put into the school district, um, without raising taxes. Now, all of the private assessment has raised assessments and that's a whole separate concern and issue. Um, but we've been able to provide additional money for the school district. Um, the matter might have come into the city, a, a lot of that just from not only expiring tax abatements, but from sales tax, amusement tax, um, the growth of our hospitality industry. Uh, I think you can make a direct correlation and connection to, um, the tax abatement and how that's helped, um, our city. I, I'm still studying the tax abatement, construction tax conversation. Um, having a new tax during a pandemic that's also economic crisis, you know, gives me some concern and pause. Uh, I understand it was, you know, it was a trade-off. The two bills are linked together, uh, from the perspective that, uh, the change in the tax abatement only goes into effect if the construction tax is passed. Um, there'll probably be some conversation on whether that rate for the construction tax should be reduced. Um, there'll also be some questions in reference to whether the construction tax will bring in the amount of money that has been projected. Um, you know, over the past number of years, we've had a very robust economy and we brought in significant revenues, but we're now in a pandemic. Uh, and there's no guarantee that at, even at 1% rate, will bring in the revenue that's anticipated. Um, I think the goal of how we're going to use those dollars are very important uh, for various number of affordable housing projects initiatives. Um, that's important. Um, but at the same point, are there other ways that we can identify resources for those goals? And the other trade, well, two other points I'll make. You're somewhat pitting the residential development community versus a commercial development community. Uh, because the commercial development community, um, still had the full 100% abatement. Uh, you're now putting a construction tax in on that. Uh, and then is it worth the trade-off of three years delayed reduction in the abatement for a 1% construction tax that will be there for possibly a significant period of time? So those are all the things that I've been kind of grappling with and concerns, um, that I have. Um, you know, the fact that I do think that we should make a extension of the time period of when this abatement changes will go into effect because we've all been crippled by, um, this pandemic, uh, the city in particular. Uh, various city departments from license inspections and water and other, um, city departments were not able to even do things remotely, uh, let alone move forward on applications and reviews of projects. And if you look in zoning, they were delayed in having zoning board of justice meetings. And the registered community organizations that are so pivotal to the zoning process, you still have a number of those organizations that are not able to meet even virtually through some of these platforms like GoToMeeting or Zoom or Microsoft Teams. So I think we're going to have a, an ongoing conversation, um, regarding this. Um, and now I'm looking to see and gathering more information from my colleagues on why they think this is a point, um, legislation that should be moved forward at this time. And I'll look to see if there's other alternatives that still allow us to accomplish the goals, but maybe not with the same perspective.
Okay. I'm going to throw in a question here that was, uh, sent within the chat to me. And this is just kind of, I guess this is background about a council, a district council person versus an at-large council person. And you had great experience working under Councilwoman Marion Tasco. Uh, so you got it firsthand as to how district office works. And now you work as an at-large. Um, what are the differences and how, how do you balance? You had one that was very focused on a geographic area, whereas you now have the entire city.
You know, as an at-large member of council, generally the members focus on more citywide issues versus very specific, um, areas. Um, those who, members who are district council members really become experts on, um, the assets of their district. So you look at someone like a council member, Kenyatta Johnson, who has, uh, the Hillco project, which is the former Sunoco site. And now Sunoco full of energy solutions, which will now be developed by Hillco. He also has the sports stadiums. Uh, so he has a, uh, a more focused perspective on those issues because those assets are in his district. Versus a council president has Temple University or, or, um, council member, I mean, Heenan has upper part of the River Wars or a council member, Mark Squiller, who has, um, you know, more of the port, um, area. We'll say a little further up in the port as well. Uh, so that at-large member, you know, we focus on all of those issues and issues that impact the city, uh, as a whole. So like some of the conversation I gave regarding the construction tax and abatement, I'm thinking about how. So like some of the conversation I gave regarding the construction tax and abatement, I'm thinking about how does that impact all of us as a city, and you know, also as the chair of the finance committee, I'm concerned very specifically, very acutely on the dollars that are coming into our city and how we balance um on budget and also provide financing for the things um that we do, so. I'm probably a little unique, because I did work for district council members, so I can relate to some of those issues and concerns pressures that they may have, having worked in that office. But as an at-large member, I'm also appreciative of how uh these is- issues impact the city as a whole. And we've got to take a macro view of issues as well.
So talking about impacting the city as a whole, it's been a rough go of it since, not just for the city, but for the entire country, since the killing of George Floyd. Um, a lot of pain, a lot of hurt, a lot of reckoning, a lot of uh conversations, a lot of stuff going on, lots of heavy, heavy stuff. And um it was no more apparent than last week on the on the virtual floor of city council um when some uh legislation that came from uh the unrest that we had and some of the protests uh that took place uh both on the highway closer to center city as well as out in West Philadelphia. So speaking of West Philadelphia, then we fast forward to the fatal killing of fatal shooting of Walter Wallace Jr. Um, you mentioned it earlier, that the bo- body camera footage will be released at some point today. What are your thoughts about what's been going on? What are steps going forward? Where are we at right now from from your perspective um with the killing of Walter Wallace?
Well, and uh for me, um, this is a very um a challenging, also a personal issue. As someone that has worked, as you heard my background earlier, in public safety in both the DA's office and also the Department of Justice in Delaware. I have family members who are the members of, on both sides of my family, you know, members that have filled up police department uh and other aspects of public safety and law enforcement, so I've had that connection on a personal level with family members, but also, as I also said earlier, I I have a son who was on autism spectrum, who um is somewhat tall, not quite my height. But you know, is five, seven, African-American man, you know, in his, you know, late teens. And so when I see that unfortunate tragic killing and seeing the video, both from what we saw on social media and then today with the body camera footage, um, it's very challenging, because I understand the difficult um work and the heroic work that our police do. But at the same point, have the concern when uh someone is dealing with a physical or more particular learning difference or having a mental health challenge, um, how that could be interpreted in different perspectives. I think from what I heard in today's conversation, there'll be some policy changes um to better inform officers as they come into the scene. Uh, what are, uh, what's been information that may have come into the police department, but they may have not known or received at that time? Um, I think that would have put the officers in a better place if they'd had more information about some of the earlier contacts um the police department had with um Mr. Wallace and his family, and would have provided um them with a possibly a different perspective on how they move forward, but uh it was definitely something challenging. Um, something very uh concerning, and it's going to have an impact on our city. And it has had an impact on our city in a in a way that has been troubling and challenging. Um, it reminds me that we have still a lot more work to do in our city. Um, and we need to find ways to bring people together, um, and have differences of opinion uh and exercise our rights to raise concerns, but not do it in a violent way. Uh, and try to move both our city and I'll say also move our nation forward, because we've been in a very divisive climate for the last number of years, and see we can get away from how we are different from each other and really focus on how we are more similar um to each other.
So Councilman, um so full disclosure, uh, once upon a time, I worked in city council, and I worked with a council member who um was very much an advocate, just like Councilman Green for the autism community and uh during my time at city council, we started the Autism Project, of which you are now one of the uh main drivers of the Autism Project. Um, the Philadelphia Autism Project is a really, it's, it's a great collaborative effort, and there's great people at the table. But one of the things that definitely came out of that initial, and I remember you were there, we did, I think we used the DA's office space, and we did these big breakouts, and we had we had the who's who of the Philadelphia autism region, if you will, um, throwing around all sorts of stuff, and some of the people that we had at the table was, it was law enforcement. Because we needed for them to understand, hey, look, when you come upon a scene, somebody might be going through something, or they're, maybe they're not looking you directly in the eye and things along those lines. Um, and there's a lot, there's a tremendous amount of education that has to go on uh to understand the populations that you're serving. So I didn't expect to go on that riff, but I just want to commend you for for continuing to go make, move that forward. Because Philadelphia is a is a leader in the autism world, we have some phenomenal people here, like Dr. Wendy Ross and the Kenny Center. I mean, I can go through the whole stuff, Drexel and 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 what all those folks are doing down there on Market Street. It's just, it's it's great work, it's God's work, um, thank you for for doing that, because we're a better city because of it.
Well, I I appreciate it, I appreciate Matt, your involvement in the past and um and also being an advocate for um this issue, and I just want to leave people with this thought, when my son was diagnosed um on autism spectrum uh back in two thousand and three. Uh, one out of every two hundred children were being diagnosed on autism spectrum. Uh, now I've seen numbers of one out of every fifty-four and one out of every forty-eight boys. When you think that the the a person's span of life, you know, birth to twenty-one is a time period people most think about someone being on autism spectrum. Either a young child uh or a uh a young adult uh or a teenager. But majority of your life is really from twenty-two until you transition. And so that's a much longer time period, and when you see the increase in the number of people who are on the spectrum, these, we're going to have more and more adults, uh, both young adults and more seasoned adults who are going to have this type of learning difference, and they're, and people will be in employment situations. They're going to be in housing situations and other situations that may come in contact with um the police and public safety. So having a conversation of how we engage people in a way that has a better understanding and comprehension of people that are neurodiverse is going to help us uh in many ways, and hopefully through this very tragic situation with Walter Wallace Jr., we'll have a broader conversation of how we um understand each other, especially through our differences.
Okay, Councilman, on that note, we've taken up a full hour of your time, we want to say thank you very much. You're a great partner to us in City Hall. We can shoot you a text message or a phone call, or sometimes you pick up the phone and talk to us and tell us, hey, I'm seeing this happening, this might be of concern to you guys, or just wanted to let you know, we really appreciate that. You don't always necessarily tell us exactly what we want to hear, but the fact that we have that relationship and that that ability to talk, um, it's meaningful and it's helpful for us, and it helps out our members. Because at the end of the day, um, that's what it's about, it's about serving our members and the work that they do in the communities that they serve in, so thank you very much uh for having that relationship with us, we really, really appreciate it, and we appreciate you giving us some time today.
No problem, thank you for um the option apps, conversation and dialogue. Um, seeing some of the questions in the chat feature are things that make it uh easier for me to do what I do, because I get a chance to hear from different people from a whole host of perspectives and background and experiences. And it's all in through this type of exchange of information that we'll be able to do a better job as elected officials to try to help uh improve and enhance not only our city, but our our region, so thank you for the opportunity.
All right, take care, Councilman, GPAR, take care, have a great day. Weather, all right, so long, everyone.
Thank you.